Here. Before, we want to call this meeting to order before we get into our business side. I need to read a statement. The statement is as follows, as authorized by Utah Code 52-4-207, this meeting is being held electronically without an anchor location. Safety of COVID-19 by limiting in-person participation. I'm going to do a quick roll call vote also to make sure your mics are working. Vice Chair Bellknap.
Hello, everyone.
Member Booth.
Good morning.
Member Cannon.
I'm here.
Member Klein.
Good morning.
Morning. Vice Chair Davis.
Yes, good morning here.
Good morning. Member Earl.
I'm here.
Okay. Member Hanson.
Yeah.
Member Har.
There.
Member Hutchings.
I'm here.
Member Hymas.
Here.
Member Lear.
Here.
Member Moss is going to be joining us a little bit late, has to be excused first thing. Member Norton.
Yeah.
Member Straight.
Yeah.
And Chair Huntsman is here. Okay, thank you. I want to welcome everyone to this, this meeting. It's wasn't, it's not a normal meeting and I appreciate you attending with somewhat a short notice. Hope everyone had a very good, safe and enjoyable weekend. Also one of the side you board members, I want to also recognize the public and I know there's some news media and other education stakeholders that also joined us. So thank you. We are privileged to have with us Speaker Wilson and then I believe you've got a somewhat of a team with you. I'm not sure if Abby Osborne, Chief of Staff is with us. For sure, I see Ben Leishman, Finance Manager Office as a Legislative Fiscal Analyst. And we also have our, our staff, board members also in this. I'm not sure if any other legislators were joining us. We'll watch on this, but what's been asked today is that we have a meeting or a briefing and Speaker Wilson wants to take point on introducing some proposed legislation and also backgrounds that would be behind it. As, as we move forward and we, before we turn the time over to Speaker Wilson and, and Ben Leishman, just so that, let's get through the presentation. And then members, I want to be respectful of the time and the opportunity to ask questions and comment. So I'm going to limit one question for board member, one for clarifying questions at a time and then we'll, we'll circle back. So members, as you're going through this, if you please write down your questions and stuff, it might be a little bit more, more efficient in there. And then I also recognize there's this temptation of a follow-up, another follow-up and another follow-up. I, I, I'm sure we can get through everyone's questions. So let's just do one at a time. So thanks again for being here. Speaker Wilson, Wilson, we welcome you and turn the beginning portion of this meeting over to you.
Well, Chair Huntsman, thank you for that introduction and thank you for finding some time for everyone to get together today. I really appreciate it. I appreciate all the work too that our state board does and we've got a great education system and you continue to do good work. So we appreciate you. Want to just take, take a minute and talk a little bit about kind of why we're having this conversation? And some of the challenges that the state is facing right now. So we, we have, as you all know, the fastest growing state in the country with a strong economy and prosperous citizens, but it's not a state that doesn't have some budgetary limitations. And as our state is growing, and Ben will walk you through this, one of the challenges we have is that the general fund, our sales tax is not growing at the same rate as income tax. And we don't really have a revenue problem in the state of Utah, but we do have a budget problem. And we don't have really the flexibility as policymakers up here on Capitol Hill at times to address statewide needs in the way that we feel we should be. And it's, it's difficult as, as a lawmaker and an appropriator to times not be able to appropriate money to the, the things you think are the most important pressing needs of the state, especially given some of the unusual circumstances that we find ourselves in, in this really unusual economy. The other thing that's going on is there's an increased pressure to remove the sales tax off food, something we're willing to consider, but it's not something that we've been able to really do and think about too much in the past because of some of the, the strains on the general fund. So we've been looking at ways to solve this recurring problem. You've heard about it before, that the firewall between income tax and sales tax creates for the state. And so we want to talk with you today about how do we create new, and, and I want to emphasize this, how do we create new and, but possibly different constitutional guarantees to protect education funding in the state with some increased ongoing funding for public education, some additional resources for teachers and some additional flexibility to address the state's budgetary constraints. And the reason that we feel like we need to have this conversation this year is it's an election year. And this is the, the year that you would put a constitutional question on the ballot if we, and you'll see in a minute when Ben walks through his slides, if we don't do something this year, three years from now, when you'd really be able to see the impact of the next election cycle, it may actually be almost too late to deal with some of the budgetary constraints we have at the state. So our goal is really twofold. We want to ensure that we can enhance and protect and prioritize public education, but at the same time, give greater flexibility to appropriators up on Capitol Hill with either removing or amending the firewall between income tax and sales tax and do all that without cutting education funding and in fact, do all that while we increase education funding. So, um, so let's, uh, let's turn some time over to Ben and have him walk through some slides that kind of explain the why, and then we'll talk a little bit about the whats. Go ahead, Ben.
Okay. Um, can everyone see the slides? I assume they're shared, but my, my display isn't showing what you're seeing. So.
And when you state your, your full name and title, but we don't need your social security number.
Okay, yes. I am Ben Leishman with the Legislative Fiscal Analyst. And I'm the Finance Manager or Fiscal Manager basically over public and higher education budgets. So, um, we wanted to go through and show a couple of, okay, I'm too fast. Okay. So basically, I'm starting out really showing a little bit of the revenue picture and what's been going on in the last several decades since 1990. Here you can go through and see the income, which is the top blue line and then the sales tax collections over that time. And they really started to diverge in the mid 90s. We often talked about the Constitutional Amendment in 1996. So you can kind of see the, the, the difference between income tax revenue growth and, and sales tax revenue growth from that time. And they've really only began, you know, they've really started to separate quite dramatically during that time. The gray bars show the recession. So you can go through and see how funding increases, particularly in the income tax. They're at the top and then you have the, the recession and the recovery coming out of those. During that time, this goes back to 2010, but this chart is basically going through and showing public education funding over the last 12 years, which has been increasing for that entire time. Luckily, we haven't had a economic downturn since the Great Recession of significance to, to put that money or show that trend going down in any point. A little bit about flexibility. So prior to or after the 1996 Constitutional Amendment, and you can see that here in the left-hand part of the chart, there was about, well, maybe just under 10% of higher education that was funded from the education fund. So here the orange part of the bar is education fund and the blue part of the bar is general fund. So, um, the amount of education fund after that Constitutional Amendment in higher education kept increasing until we hit the peak of the economy, which in this case is 2001. And that's the, the, the recession that came after the dot com bust. And so what the legislature was able to do is in times of good, spend more money in higher education from the education fund. And then when the economy turned, they shifted that funding out of education fund, replaced it with general fund. Obviously from likely budget cuts during those times to shift that money back to public education. So at the, when we recovered from that recession, basically, the education general fund split was about where it was prior to that recession. Then we start growing again up to the Great Recession in 2008. But as you can see there in 2011, we never quite get back to in the recovery that less than 10% of education fund in higher education. And what that really means is a permanent shift from educate, from general fund to education fund for a portion of higher education spending. Again, after FY 2011, we're in expansion period and you can see that that shift continued to occur until FY 2019. That was really the beginning of the Amendment G discussion. And you could see at that time, we were facing, as the legislature, basically all of higher education being funded out of the education fund again. And only a small component out of the general fund. Amendment G passes and that provides a little bit more flexibility by adding children and basically programs for children and individuals with disabilities back into the year or into the use of education fund. And provided a little bit of flexibility. However, in the last two fiscal years, due to the changes in the economy and priority of spending as determined by the legislature, that flexibility has been pretty much taken out of those and all of those programs are now being funded through the education fund. With a little exception of a little bit there in fiscal year 2022, that 2022 amount, a portion of that is one time, which then would re, you know, started, we started the beginning of FY 2023 back up to close to where we were in 2020. But again, that shift will likely have to occur in order to meet state spending priorities. There's about 579 million. This is, I guess I should say before revenue estimates last week of available flexibility between the education fund and general fund for FY 2023. And we just listed some items here that are of high importance or high pressure items coming into this budget cycle, like affordable housing, state correction, you know, state compensation, which includes corrections, health and human services providers, stuff along that line. And it shows that that funding gets spent very quickly. Given the amount of flexibility we have left in the budget. And with that, unless our questions, I'll turn it back over to Speaker.
Ben, I appreciate that. Let me just kind of reflect on the slide that's on the screen. We're rounding kind of the final curve with the, the budget this week and next. And it's, uh, it's difficult to kind of explain how difficult some of our state agencies, difficult times some of our state agencies are having, keeping the lights on and kind of doing their basic, basic responsibilities. And this just gives you a feel for some of the pressures that we have in the state of Utah being a rapidly growing state. And so the good news is this year, even though it looks dire and it kind of is, meaning we're out of the ability to, to pull money through higher ed and Amendment G to, to balance the state's needs. We think we're probably going to be able to figure it out, but next year and the years after, it's, it's really tricky. And so the last thing I'll say is you probably remember Amendment G. It's something we just did a few years ago and, and it was designed with sort of normal budgetary times in mind. And we thought that it would probably give us about a 10-year run rate or 10-year time horizon to, to manage the needs between the general fund and the education fund, sales tax and income tax. But because of the unprecedented growth in the state over the last few years, as well as the amount of money that's been flowing from Washington, our buckets are really, really out of whack. And so right now, for example, there's on one-time money that you would never want to put into a significant amount of it into public education because you can't spend it on salaries and the kinds of things that you need to do to run public ed. But because of the constitutional firewall, there's some restrictions on how that money can be used. So what we're talking about is putting a question on the ballot this fall that would, we'll, we'll show you a couple of options that would give the voters a chance to think through what kind of additional flexibility they would like to see in the general fund and education fund and how that money could be used. And let me just have Ben, we can pull up a flyer that kind of describes that, but the question would basically have the, the question around either one question. Option A would be amend the constitution to give appropriators more flexibility with the general fund. Question B is very different. We'll talk about it in a minute. And that would be tied to also the sales tax being removed from food at the same time. So Ben, why don't you walk through or I can, I'm not sure which of us is going to do this part.
I think I'm trying to share it. So.
We can kind of see it. It's not a full screen right now.
Okay. Does that help?
Yeah. Okay, it does. Probably just scroll, scroll.
Start at the beginning.
So, you know, I'll, I'll just kick this off and Ben jump in anytime, but just as a kind of a, a look back through Amendment G, we, we did give the legislature more flexibility with children and disabled individuals to use income tax money for those purposes. And through that, we created the economic stabilization account. We automatically now fund growth and inflation. And then we build upon that with the WPU each year. So, so that's been a big change and we've heard from a lot of education stakeholders that that's been a good thing for public education. If you scroll down, we've already kind of talked about this next section. So we can get this flyer sent out through Angie to, to the board members, but this just kind of gives you the same stuff that Ben walked through. And let's go down to kind of option A's proposal, which is we'll continue to fund public education through some additional guarantees, some of which would be constitutional. And, uh, but at the same time, we would amend the constitution to give appropriators more flexibility to use income tax and sales tax for whatever they thought the highest and best needs of the state were. And we would remove the sales tax on food and all this would be on the ballot as a ballot question this, this fall. And on the education side of things, here's what the funding framework would look like. We would A, move the rainy day fund we currently have for public education into constitutional language through the Uniform School Fund. And then we would make sure that that education rainy day fund that would be in the constitution would be prioritized for funding if money were ever to come out of it, it would be the first place to get filled back up. And the whole idea there is kind of ties back to what we talked about a few years ago with Amendment G. Public education is a big winner if regardless of what's happening with the economy, growth and inflation are funded even in the difficult times. And that helps us accomplish that mission. The second element of this potential change would be to change the calculation for the inflation adjustment that happens now automatically. Right now, we average that out over five years. And, and so what that means is that as inflation changes, you get a rolling five-year average increase each year. The idea would be to reduce that calculation to be a three-year rolling average. Bottom line is this, it would bring the revenue into public education in a more similar fashion to what inflation is behaving like in a shorter period of time. So it would, it would rise a little bit faster as inflation goes up. But as inflation dropped, then you would also see those automatic increases dropping a little bit faster. But if we were averaging over three years right now instead of five, there would have been an increase of an additional $133 million this year. Now keep in mind, that money is going to come eventually anyway. So we're not changing how much money public education would get over a five-year period. We're just changing how quickly it would come. The third element of this kind of first option is then to provide on an ongoing basis up to four days or 32 hours of educator professional time in addition to their standard contract days. And the other thing about this one is we would adjust that automatically each year for growth and inflation. And lastly, we would appropriate some additional funding for teacher supplies and materials and also adjust that for growth and inflation. So that's kind of the option one scenario. And again, just to reiterate, basically it, it takes the firewall and eliminates it between sales tax and income tax. A lots of appropriators and lawmakers decide how to spend income tax and sales tax. You would still see all the benefits of Amendment G plus these additional elements that I just, I just described. So that's, um, that's option one, and that would be a ballot question that the voters would choose in, in November, whether they liked it or not. Ben, why don't we have you walk through the second option, uh, which is very different. And it really doesn't deal, it's a more narrow proposal. And it's one, I'll just kind of give you the headline. It retains the constitutional language around income taxes being used for public education and those other elements we've added higher ed, children and disabled folks. It keeps that protection. But what it does is it then says that, but there's going to be times like we're in right now where you've got these really crazy economic spikes and cycles. And it, it basically says, well, if we have bubble revenue or revenue, we call above trend, that revenue, because it's not really going to be enduring or sustainable, that above trend revenue could be used for other purposes other than public education, just in these kinds of unusual peaks during our economic cycle. So why don't you walk through this one, Ben? This is kind of the second option.
Yeah. So under this option, again, it would include a couple of constitutional changes. The first would be in that same section where basically children and individuals with disabilities was added. Basically putting a, a wording in there to limit the, the constitutional restriction to some concept of regular and sustainable revenue, which would then be defined by a corresponding statute. As the speaker said, this fixes the current revenue cycle issue, basically those high amounts of one-time money coming into the state and may extend the phase in of the ongoing flexibility provided under Amendment G. So one of the questions come here, what does regular and sustainable mean? In budget terms, that's basically that one-time revenue, either it comes from prior year surplus. So basically when we finish a fiscal year and more revenue came in than we projected, that's a surplus. We also go through and reestimate revenues for a current year. So that in this case, for this year, for example, that'd be fiscal year 2022. Any new revenue that's estimated for FY 22 is considered one time because you're partway through the year. And then the, that impacts the ongoing amount and that would not be factored into, so say for the FY 23 budget. And then sustainable comes in, in looking at projections over time that look at how the revenue collections factor into a trend. And we have a little bit of chart here that goes off of that long-term chart you shot, saw the first part of this, of the presentation. But here you can see the green line is the income tax collections over time. And where the, and then the blue line is the trend. And so in those years where you have that revenue coming in above that trend, that would be considered non-sustainable and how the legislature has used that in the past is basically spend it as one-time revenue and maintain the ongoing revenue associated with those, with that trend and program that into budgets. So you, here you can see a couple of instances where that green line goes above the trend. We're in that now at the very top of, of this example. Second component to that is, was also included in the first, but basically to amend the constitution, that the legislature establish programs or mechanisms to stabilize public education budgets and mitigate economic downturns. So what programs would this include? That public education economic stabilization account that was created as a result of, of Amendment G. And that provides ongoing revenue reserves for a downturn in order to basically fund the ongoing portions of the public education budget, primarily the, the minimum school program. And then in those downturn years also provide for an inflationary factor and enrollment growth. The second item in this is creating a public education specific budget reserve account or rainy day account. And this would likely be created out of the current education fund rainy day account, but be specific for the uniform school fund or expenditures from that fund, I guess I should say. This is an actual cash savings, but it also is one-time revenue, which helps you get through those short years of an economic downturn or to provide a bridge through those as well. This change would also including, include appropriating all of the public education budget from the uniform school fund. So that change in Amendment G was only applied to the minimum school program or those funds going out to school districts and charter schools. This would bring the state board of education budget and the schools for the deaf and blind budget into that uniform school fund concept. And with that, unless Speaker has any closing stuff.
Well, Ben, Ben, thank you. And Chair Huntsman will be happy to answer questions. Let me just, before we do that, just say we, we wanted to get the state board's feedback and answer your questions. We, we, it's kind of a tricky balancing act to make sure that we continue to fund public education, but also manage the state budget, especially during these very volatile times. And so we're trying to find the best path forward to do that. And usually some of our best thinking comes when we get everyone talking about it. So that's what I've got unless we're going to go to some questions.
Well, thank you. Before we get to the questions, I just want to remind the board that we're going to have a hard stop at 11:30. There's other responsibilities that are happening up on the hill here. And we, we do want to use this time wisely here. We also want, I also want to remind the board that we're going to be back together. Most likely this will be on our agenda Thursday when we, when we meet again. This isn't actionable. So let's, let's just dive into questions and Vice Chairs, if you can help me, I'm going to kind of keep track of round one of questions. And we're starting off with the member booth. And if you can see who, if you've got a question for, for Ben or the speaker, if you would call that out. call that out when you're asking the question, or you can ask of staff, so member booth.
Thank you, Chair. I I have a question for Ben. I wonder if we could go back to that last slide. The very, the very last little element of funding the state board and the schools for the deaf and blind in the uniform school fund just seemed like a sudden was kind of jarring to me. And I need just a little bit more explanation as to what kind of a fiscal, I mean, what's happening financially? That's a pretty huge move. And I would just like to have a little bit more information and not just say, again, by the way, we're going to do this. And so just wondering if there was any more information you could provide in terms of how that would impact the amount of funding that we currently are working under and and how that would be addressed in the the changes that you're proposing to the Constitution.
And if I if I can, Chair, basically, the way it works now after Amendment G, the two funds, the education fund and the uniform school fund are basically filled with income tax revenue proportional to their appropriation. The State Board of Education was left out of those line items of the State Board of Education office and the and the schools for the deaf and blind were left out of that concept in Amendment G. But the the question here is if you create a uniform school fund rainy day account, the idea is to have all of of education being funded out of the same account and being able to use that money for all of education as opposed to just a subset or just the minimum school program. So it wouldn't really change funding for the border, the schools for the deaf and blind, because it's just basically changing where those funds are being appropriated from.
I could just add, though, this in in both options actually does put and prioritizes constitutionally the rainy day fund for public education, which is something we haven't had retrospectively.
Thank you very much, Speaker Wilson and Ben, I appreciate that.
Member Hutchings.
Hello, thank you. The one question I have lingering right now, just to kind of drill down and understand this better, is could you address the the risk to education funding? Just specifically, I see what I've seen with changing the rolling average to three years instead of five years, there's more, a little more volatility in the funding. But, you know, overall, we'll still get the same amount of funding is my understanding. But if looking at it just through an education lens, what's our greatest risk? What scenario would present risk to education funding?
Well, I'll I'll take a stab at this, Ben. Feel free to to jump in. So you just described one of the elements that I don't know if it's a risk or just an interesting dynamic that you would see a little bit more volatility with revenue going from five years to three years. The the other kind of big part of this, though, if you go to especially option one, you know, there's been this belief in the state that because of the firewall between income tax and sales tax, that that there's this protection for public education. But if you go back and look at how well that's worked in terms of providing funding for public education, it really has been a very poor funding model. And in fact, I would argue that Amendment G and the funding mechanisms we have in place now, funding growth and inflation automatically, has done more to fund public education on a more stable basis than the constitutional provisions ever have. And so the question then becomes, how do you build from that? What can we do to kind of make this even better and more consistent for public education? And that's why we're talking about some of these things. But there there's nothing, even though you've got this constitutional firewall between income tax and sales tax and its use, it doesn't actually change the fact that the legislature can raise or lower taxes anytime they want. And so what what I think we need to be focusing on is how do we have a funding model instead of a revenue model? And what we've had has been a revenue model, not a funding model. So that's kind of the direction that I think over time we we need to go. And I think that Amendment G was part of that conversation, and I think this is. And was talking with some education leaders this morning. And we need to continue to have those those conversations over coming years.
Mr. Speaker, I I failed to recognize, what time did you have to leave?
Yeah, I need to actually tap out at about 11, Chair Huntsman, so.
All right, okay, thank you. Member Norton.
Yes, I was just wondering, either from Ben or from House Speaker, if there's any guardrails being considered to put around the WPU to shore up that it can be used for the actual programs that it was intended to use. And we're seeing more and more pressure being put on that. And I I'm concerned, you know, that this could once again add significantly more pressure on that, you know, the actual funding of public education by these new challenges that are being laid out before us.
Ben or Speaker?
Maybe I could just ask for some clarification on the question. Is the question around more, you want more flexibility with how WPU can be spent? Is that what the question was?
No, I think actually less flexibility. I think that, you know, right now, it it appears to me that our LEAs have, you know, some pretty there's some pretty strong restrictions on where they can and can't use it. And that's that's good. We want it to be used for public education. But, you know, it seems like more is being asked to be put into that WPU or excuse me, taken out of that WPU. And and I I'm just concerned that there's not going to be much WPU to then go ahead and take more out of it even further.
Okay, I I think I understand the question. And that actually came, that issue came up this morning in a in a conversation we were having as well. And and I I think probably what we need to do is just understand what some of those things are that are being pulled out of the allocation that each LEA gets towards the WPU and make sure we're we're having honest and accurate conversations about what's really being foisted onto the WPU. So that would be, maybe Ben can shed some additional light on that.
One thing I would maybe add to that is that issue of of prioritization, both at the local level and the state level, impacts what's being asked of from those WPU dollars. So by and large, the most of them are unrestricted, except in those cases of special ed and CTE. But you're, you know, as costs increase in school districts and those priorities either of the legislature or of the, you know, the local boards take claim to more and more of those dollars. I think that's what you're getting at, if I understand right. And, you know, part of that is is that tension between local decision-making and providing that flexibility.
I think that that
Thank you, yes.
Okay, thank you. Member Hart.
Yes, I'm interested. When you started your comments at the beginning, you said that it would be too late in three years. I guess I'd like to know more of the harm in waiting. And if it if it if it really need to be done now, why is it being brought up in the last two weeks of the session?
So that's a good question. So if Ben, if you want to go back to the slide with the bar graphs, I think it's up towards slide three or four, there we go. So just to kind of go back and revisit this slide here, if you look at fiscal year 21, we exhausted all the headroom in our flexibility buffer, which you see listed their higher ed, children and individuals with disability. We did in 22, we will in 23 as well. The the reason we're going to probably be able to get through 23 is we've got ARPA funds this year that will help us with a little flexibility. But next year, we won't have that ability. And so the reason that this needs to be addressed sooner than later is this is an election year, so it can be on the ballot. If we wait two additional years, you're three sessions out. And and our ability to fund some of those programs, like if you look at the next slide, our ability to take care of raises for state employees, to take care of corrections, public safety, natural resources in the state. Quite frankly, I just don't know how some of those programs are going to endure or or manage through three years of not addressing this sooner. Your question, Board Member Hart, about why is it coming up this late in the session? We actually started talking about this in in December in EAC. Not a lot of people were paying attention. And but what's happened is is we're getting closer and closer to getting the budget done, including revised revenue estimates. The problem is just getting worse and and worse. To give you an idea, last week, when revenue estimates came out, sales tax growth was only 30% of of the growth in revenue. And so all the things that are funded with sales tax in the state, all of our courts, all of our public safety, all the natural resource needs we have, affordable housing, homelessness, the list goes on and on, are funded out of that sales tax bucket. And it's it's just not keeping up with the state's state's growth. So that's the kind of long, complicated answer to your question. And and trust me, no one dislikes this less than I do. This is not a good problem to have. It's a it's a really tricky thing, and we're just going to have to work through it as a state.
So and then also in that same space, and I I this thing has been playing out, I haven't gone back to all the old reports and and tried to chase them out, chase them down, Mr. Speaker. But back several years ago, when we're talking about the tax situation and trying to come up with a tax solution, this very challenge that you're having on sales tax was predicted and shared amongst the public years ago. But it 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 seemed like that, I guess, flying it into the ground was maybe projected or speculated that it would be a few more years out than what we're experiencing right now. And then if you could speak to that, and then also what's happening on the inflation side and war for talent and a few other things against those very agencies that you were talking about also escalates what's happening here on the budget side. Can you speak to any of that, Mr. Speaker?
Yeah, I mean, they're not fun things to talk about, but I'm happy to. The the when we when we went through the process two years ago, believe it or not, with about the same amount of time left in the general session to get Amendment G passed, we thought we'd have eight to 10 years of runway with that. But because of the unusual growth in the state and the way that the state has been growing and, you know, all the federal money that that was cut to two, a little over two years worth of runway. So that's the, and and if historical trends had been right, we would have had eight to 10 years. But obviously, the last few years have been anything but but normal. And and we've got right now some state agencies that have turnover in excess of 70%. 88% of state employees are paid well below market wages. And it's just a tricky, tricky challenge. And we're seeing turnover across the state. And we know that there's turnover in public ed as well. We're not saying there's not, it's just how do we balance all the needs of the state out kind of at the same time? So Chair, did I address your questions? Okay. Got everything.
Okay. Vice Chair Bellknap, we have three in the queue, so.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to talk to Speaker Wilson, if that's okay, Chair?
Yes.
First of all, thank you for bringing this to the elected state board. I appreciate that, number one. And number two, I understand that the general fund and the ed fund was always the balancing act with higher ed, that they, we kind of balanced with those and that that is where the rub is coming, that they're taking it now out of the education fund. I guess my one question would be, you've you've met with the USBA and the USSA group or the JLC. Were there any questions there that may be questions that we might want to consider as well in this discussion?
So that's a great question, Laura. Well, we've had a lot of conversations, really just in the spirit of brainstorming. And their questions have been similar to what have already been asked today. So nothing's jumping out at me. Let me let me think about that, though. And if something comes to me, I'll I'll holler at you or let you.
Okay. And and our one-time capital, we could use, we could use one-time money for capital in our K-12 schools.
Yeah, but we've got the request in that, you know, we do. And and just so you know, that economic state or that education stabilization fund, you know, we've got hundreds of millions of dollars going into that now, which will help buffer public ed in the future in case of an economic downturn, something public education's never had before. But the offshoot of that is there is some one-time money that's created. And we're looking at ways to use that for capital programs across the state, as well as some other uses that could benefit educators and schools, et cetera.
Thank you, thanks, Chair.
Vice Chair Davis, then Lauren Straight, so Vice Chair Davis.
Thank you. I had a question on the graph, the line graph that shows the growth for the education funding for the WPU. And I wondered from Ben, if that reflects overall dollars or if that reflects the the growth? And I apologize, I'm on a on a phone traveling, but or if that reflects the amount per student spent on WPU on our students?
This chart is it's basically just overall dollars for the system.
Okay, so so that growth would, that line could indicate the numbers of students added into the system as opposed to maybe a per student expenditure. And then I just wanted to piggyback on what Board Member Norton asked. I wasn't sure if I caught that answer. Has there been any discussion of putting a guardrail or a guarantee of some type of automatic increase to the WPU beyond a growth and inflation as part of this as part of these discussions?
There's been some, a lot of different ideas. One of the ideas that came out of some of the conversations was how do we actually? Well, that kind of evolved into the the professional time and the prep time. How do we give teachers a little bit more capacity to do their jobs in a difficult environment? But not specifically to what you're asking, Member, Member Davis.
Yep.
Okay, Member Lear.
Thank you. I have, and thank you for coming to us. I wish it were sooner in the session and we had more time to process this. But it seems to be a magic time in sessions. I I have two concerns. One is the big tax cut that the legislature already announced. And that seems like that could address this at some degree, at least to get us through the next year or so. But that's apparently water under the bridge. My second concern is it is something of a rhetorical question. You keep referring to this as the educate, the education rainy day fund. But the truth of it is, it would be completely in control of the legislature. Is that right?
So let me just kind of take both of your comments. So the income tax cut that happened by the legislature, if that hadn't have occurred, wouldn't actually have helped this problem at all. Because the problem we have is with with sales tax, and and that hasn't been been cut. That's where we're seeing the most pressure. But in in terms of the education rainy day fund, the the way that the waterfall works is if if the state revenues were to start to decline, the first thing that the legislature needs to do, and this is defined in statute, is fund growth and fund inflation. And so we've got the education stabilization fund with about $300 million of ongoing money in it right now. in it right now that's set aside for those lean years to keep growth and inflation happening, even if state revenues are not increasing. And so that would happen until those funds were depleted. But then you've also got the Education Rainy Day Fund, which by statute right now is protected and only available to be used for public education. What we're suggesting is that we actually move that to the Constitution so that it couldn't be changed by statute to be used by anything else. So while the legislature would make the decision about how much money would come out of that Education Rainy Day Fund, whether it's in statute or in the Constitution, the only allowable use would be for education.
Right, but right, and as Superintendent Dixon would say, that decision, despite the fact that some educators might say it's raining, would still be in the hands of the legislature. And that's my concern. We've been saying it's raining for 10 years and what plus? And I still am concerned that that we would have no more control in terms of a decision when it's raining. Thank you for sharing that.
Member Straight.
Thank you. Speaker Wilson, thank you for coming and addressing us today. I so appreciate that. I I want to talk a little bit about optics for a second. You know, you started your comments with how we are grateful for our educators and all they do. I have to say that in the one year that I've been on the state board, it's been from one conflict or controversy to another. Teachers are under attack. Local school boards are under attack. Superintendents and principals, everyone in education is under attack. And so I I may believe that the best of will is there. There's so much going on. One optic that I would like to see different is that with Senate Bill 211, where they actually want to change the name, the Education Fund, to the Income Tax Fund. I think that's a horrible optic, because I I think that is an attack. We have we have documentaries being made by senior senators or by a senior senator attacking public education. I I felt last year the optics were really good between the legislature and the state board. I really want that because I want to work work not only for what's best for education, which is my primary responsibility, but I also want to work on behalf of all the people of the state of Utah. And that means working with the legislature, which is absolutely awesome. I do have one question. My question is in regards to projections, especially with the education fund. How was, how did the July change of taxes in 2020 impact our current piece of income tax growth? What is our current trend in income growth versus that of sales tax? Thank you.
Well, so income tax growth, this last projection that just came out was 70% of revenue growth and sales tax was 30%.
Is what's the trend in January?
That's that's the trend. So. And that'll show you over the last 20 or 30 years, 30 years, what the the growth differential has been.
I think that the item here is basically although both are growing, the the income tax has a as a higher trend than the the sales tax.
There's a variety of reasons for that, which we've talked about in the past. Moving more to a services-based economy is just one of them.
What about recent month to month?
Again, we just got the revisions and the revision since December, 30% sales tax, 70% income tax.
Um. Mr. Speaker, I know you you've got to go here pretty soon. I I do have, Vice Chair Davis is in the queue, but I I in our some of our previous one-on-one conversations, we've talked about what's being proposed is the floor and not the not the ceiling. And hopefully, before you go, you can you can speak to that just a little bit. Well, Vice Chair Davis, you you had a question and.
She's on. I lowered my hand, and I will just say thank you to the speaker and Mr. Leishman for their presentation today.
Okay. Speaker Will.
Yeah, well, Chair Huntsman, you've been great. You're always willing to talk and meet and share the perspective you have from the state board. And I know there's a lot of different perspectives on the state board, but you should just know that Mark is Mark is amazing. But we we do intend, and I've said this before, but I'll just share this quote again. Well, I'll just say this, we've got to continue to work on the education funding system. And Amendment G by funding growth and inflation are part of that. There's more work to be done. Those were designed to create a floor, and we will add additional WPU this year like we have the last two years. And so so we'll we'll continue to work towards that. And this is a tricky balancing act that we've got, and I just will share this last thing. So what we're talking about is putting something in front of the voters, letting the voters decide what they think about making a change to how we budget in the state. What's the what's the process they want the the state's appropriators to use and how we decide what to fund in the state, but do it in a way where we still prioritize education funding and have reserves for education? And that's sort of the different options that we're talking through right now. And as you can imagine, there's lots of different ideas is the best way to do this. But one thing we're good at in this state, and I hope that we can continue to be good at, is avoiding problems before they arrive. And this isn't a crisis today. But in a year or two, we are going to have some really, really tough things happening. And it's not really our nature as a state to wait until we're in the middle of the ocean floating without a life jacket. Let's get this figured out before we're out there without without the safety that we need and try to put our fingerprints on this before it becomes a bigger problem. So that's what this conversation is about today. And and what are we going to ask the voters to decide on this fall? So that's all I've got, Chair Huntsman.
I know I know you you've got to go, and you're welcome to stay on. And hopefully, Ben will stay on in case we need those graphs. We still have a half hour. We can discuss this some more as a group. So thank you. You're welcome to to stay if you have the time. Member Hart, your hand is raised.
Yeah, I was wondering what other changes to the tax code they're considering besides changing things with an underfunded education system already?
I'm going to have to jet. I'm not aware of any other tax cut bills that are progressing this session. There is a large movement, I think, at some point to take the sales tax off food. But but those bills, I don't think are progressing this this session.
But there's no other changes to the tax code instead of this change that's being suggested? There's no other options?
Well, there's a number of bills out there that create tax credits for businesses and things like that, but I'm not aware of any that would probably be of a size that are going to cause a lot of disruption to to revenue streams in the state.
Yes, thank you.
At chance, when I'm actually going to have to go, the House is debating bills on the floor, and I need to get out there and do my other job. So we'll let you guys take it from here. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker.
Have a safe day. Ben, I think is going to stay on with us, and we also have some of our staff if there's some questions. So Board Members, this is, appreciate your meeting. Appreciate you taking my phone call as we're getting ready for this this meeting. I think I perceive what's happening. I haven't seen any bills or anything in supporting what is being proposed here, but I believe probably between now and our Thursday meetings that they'll be coming out. And as this is happening and as we're made aware, we're will aggressively make sure that we as a group are aware of of what's happening as this is moving. Not sure what direction that you heard of, an option one and an option two that is being entertained. I don't know if you guys want to speak or discuss or in anything of that or nature or get clarity, but the the time is yours. Member Straight.
Yes, this question's for Ben, if I may.
Yes.
So Speaker mentioned the 70-30 split between income and income tax fund or general fund and education fund. What has been the the average split over the last 10 years? Um, that I don't know. I'd have to, I usually work on the spending of the money, not the raising of the money side of the budget, so probably find that out. But I think it's been fairly similar. It's always been within that that range, but I can find out. Thank you.
Member Cannon.
Thank you. I have a question for Ben. Ben, I was concerned with Amendment G passing and the idea that this would provide money for all the disabled people that we we need to take care of. And I'm just wondering if you would give me your opinion about what kind of impact that caring for all the disabled throughout the state has had on education funding as we've implemented Amendment G?
I would answer that largely based on the constitutional provision really has no factor in how much public education funding gets. That's a different decision by the legislature. So they go through and they determine their spending priorities and and then apply the revenues where they can to fund those priorities. The only instance where the constitutional firewall comes into play is in these cases when there's not enough play in the budget to move towards general fund items.
Member Booth.
I would just love a little bit of response from Ben or from others who may have a handle on this. I would just like to understand the difference between Proposal A and Proposal B. Is Proposal A, what the legislature is proposing is this is what we really want to do, and if we can't do that, then we'll go with Proposal B? Or is the funding model versus a revenue model that the speaker mentioned as he was talking about Proposal B? Is is that is that more realized through Proposal B than Proposal A? Just a little bit unclear on that.
Proposal A fixes basically the the flexibility problem for both ongoing and one-time sources forever. So basically, removing that split would allow the legislature to spend income tax and general fund, basically income tax and sales tax based on their priorities without that limit. But there there there's an on, you know, there's a trend of that, which Amendment G fixed. But then there's one-time swings in the economy. And so what what Option Two does is basically just addresses the one-time swings in the economy. It extends basically, you know, like they said, the the flexibility has been used up in two, two and a half years when we thought it would take 10. Option B would probably extend the life of that several years, but without significant change in overall tax policy, likely going to be a similar question down the road somewhat when that flexibility dries up again.
Thank you.
Member Hart.
Yeah, I and my question is a fairly naive question. So there's Option A, there's Option B, and there exists no other options that they're proposing? Is that what I'm understanding?
They on their on their side, they're entertaining based on input from JLC and their conversation and and that and conversations have been happening on their end, they're entertaining two different options. Option one that the speaker talked to and Option Two. I don't know. I haven't heard of an Option Three.
Okay, so this is like, it's like scales to me. So there's this artificial separation of of income tax and sales tax. So if they don't have enough on the sales tax, why is it becoming an education problem and not a taxation problem on the sales tax side? I'm just trying to understand.
And can you speak to that?
I think, you know, there there is some issue in the the growth of the two revenue sources. Income tax grows faster than general fund, as we've discussed. Besides that, there's just other taxing policy going along with that. If you go back to the tax reform prior to Amendment G and trying to adjust the the sales tax, there was some discussion, but that broke down. And so basically, this is what's left, Amendment G and this until, you know, other proposals are raised. But so far, that's all that's come out of the legislature.
So it's a policy decision then? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair Davis.
Yes, thank you. Ben, what what percentage of the sales tax is the food tax overall? And and also, if the movement to get rid of the food tax, would that include prepared foods or only like a raw material, like a grocery type food?
Again, this is one I would have to check on for sure. The state portion of the ink or the sales tax, I think, is around 160, 170 million dollars, which I think is about 12%. But again, I'd have to go through and and double check those numbers.
Thank you. And did you know if it would be on prepared or grocery, or is that what you need to check on?
I think it would just be on grocery, from what I understand. But yeah, that would just, again, depend on what they put in the bill or not. But I think the 170 is just on the the unprepared that you'd buy at the grocery store.
Thank you.
And I I'm under the same impression to Ben on the grocery. I could be wrong. Um, who hasn't who hasn't been able to to speak to any of this? I'm going to go to Member Hanson.
Thank you, Chair.
Your hand still raised?
Just an observation, I guess, and then a question. And when I look at the chart on this one pager that says the problem and why now, I am not from my seat on state on the state school board, I'm not seeing the problem. I'm seeing opportunities. We have record levels in the general fund, record levels of funding, and we have record levels of funding in the sales tax, the education fund, excuse me, in the education fund. Really, what we're talking about here is a matter of priorities. This, if we chose to as a state, we could seize this opportunity and move Utah from 51st or 50th or 49th, wherever we rank with Idaho and Oklahoma, to somewhere much higher up the the chain as far as per pupil spending. But we're saying there are other things that are more important, is what I'm understanding, than doing that right now. So and then just the that's the observation. The question for Ben maybe is, aren't there some mechanisms where we could move the sales tax on food cut over into the or the income tax bucket by giving income tax? on food cut over into the, or the income tax bucket by giving income tax credits? Wasn't that a proposal that came up a while ago?
Yes, I think that was part of one of the plans. I think that was the governor's plan coming into the session. As we're talking about this, I did get some messages from angels out there, hundred and seventy million on sales tax on food and that's six percent of unrestricted sales tax. But yeah, so that's basically policy decision at that point as to what's included, but there was that, that suggestion. I don't think it made it into the final tax cut that was just passed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Member Straight?
It appears to me that this sales tax on food issue is really kind of like dangling a carrot. And I'm very much in favor of, of eliminating the sales tax on food. It's very regressive. And it would benefit our state in great ways among those who are, who are struggling financially. We now have more working poor in Utah and, and they're making more per hour, but cost of living is just, it's just too much. So there was an income tax credit that was part of the one hundred and ninety-one million. This is kind of a separate thing that they were debating, but I really feel like it's, it's a carrot. And, you know, really, I think it was hit on the head by someone else better earlier. And that is that it's not an education problem. They ran into the lack of political will to alter sales tax on other items and to, and to reform taxation several years ago, and it came back on education.
I'm, am I, can I be heard? My friend, my, I'm in like the best office at USBE, which is Deputy Superintendent Scott Jones, but I'm wireless. And I keep having some hiccups here and there. I don't know why I, I'm gonna have to maybe go to the IT room or something to get it. So if I get lost, one of the vice chairs will have to finish this up. So we, Board members, we've been briefed on, on this and the, the reality, you know, the realist in, in all of this is that there is a tremendous amount of pressure on the legislature on the sales tax on food. Along with that is some of these other budgeting challenges that are there. I, I have been to a couple of meetings prior to this, very concerned about the what's in the Utah constitution and the protections that are there. I'm also been very mindful of Amendment G and the, the promises and commitment that's been in that place. We're, we're still at this, at the table a little bit here as the legislature is moving this forward. The, as I'm, I'm looking at opportunity, I'm seeing there's this opportunity one, an opportunity two, as I look at opportunity two, it's just a little bit, has the perception of being a little bit better than one, but it doesn't. Well, it's, it's, it seems to be a little bit on the optic side, more of a betterment than what it really is when you start putting paper to pen and, and cranking out the numbers. The reality is if this moves forward, it will go to the public and, and the public will, will make a vote on this. And the biggest driver of this is gonna be, do they want to eliminate sales tax on food? Now, this is the realist here. I'm trying to be a realist in this space. And you as Board members, you know, you, you can speculate what, who, how people are gonna vote, including teachers on that. What's driving them, what I'm hearing from other legislators that didn't get out here is inflation, especially on the, the food cost and then also on the energy cost. A lot of people are being affected by what's happening now with this, with inflation. So I think there's motivation on their part. I, I also am looking very aggressively at a concept of you guys have heard this before about a bird in hand is better than two in the bush. Why, I, from Amendment G to what's being proposed here, it's about how much bird can we have in our hand through this process and do we have an opportunity on, on the education side and future boards working with future legislators and et cetera? Do we have an opportunity at those two birds that are in the, in the bush? Which we advocate for, advocate for funding. Additional funding above and, above and beyond what we, we have had secured. So that's the opportunity that's, that's gonna go before the public in here. And that's what they're trying, I think, way out between those. Again, they're circling back to the two options that, that they're entertaining. And of course, your feedback here, we could give more feedback on Thursday. We can comment what we see and if there's a bill and et cetera. So I'm, I'm quite sure that our lift on Thursday is important also that you know that, that the world around the challenges that we're having with support with, with some of the bills that are coming out here, we know, we know what they are. We've opposed them. And that doesn't speak to kumbaya. We are all in the same sandbox and we all get along. But it's, those aren't really leveraging pieces. They can, they in leadership and others certainly can do what they need to do there. There's also what hasn't come out is exactly what's happening in this funding scenario. So I know the other groups, myself included, have been advocating, hey, the proof's in the pudding, the WPU that's coming out is, is really, really important. And some of these other things, but those are not like negotiated at this space because we're, we're not in a position and I and your staff are not in any position to negotiate anything like that. There's, they, they have heard and they have heard clearly the concerns that we have had in this space of, of what's happening in the education environment this past year as some of you have brought up. So again, I'm just trying to bring this back in, not to close this out, but this is where I'm seeing things going as, as your, as the chair. And also it's the opportunities that's gonna be before us probably Thursday. A member booth, your hand is raised?
Thank you, Chair. I am, I'm grateful for your leadership and for the connection that you and other board leaders are maintaining with our legislators so that this kind of communication can take place. I think one of our serious concerns you mentioned that we're aware of, of how the public is going to react to sales tax on food or any of these issues. It's apparent that we're not in a particularly positive place, even though we are seeing all of the great things that are happening in education. Unfortunately, there seems to be a, a sense among our publics and in the legislature that is not particularly favorable towards public education as much as it ought to be because there are so many fantastic things happening. Sure, we've got our, our challenges. So I'm just interested in where we think our publics might and our legislators might end up. And, and how do we strategically lend our support to the right? You know, choice number, opportunity number one or opportunity number two, so that we protect children and that we are able to continue doing the good things that are happening. Even though the public may not be aware or choose to be aware of the good that is ongoing. There's just so many things that we could talk about, but, but in kind of a, a situation where there's enough misinformation or enough lack of information that our public might be inclined to vote in certain ways that are ill-informed. So we've got to be very strategic and careful about what we do to make sure that we maintain what we've got to maintain to keep producing for our children that we have responsibility for and our educators that we represent.
So remember the booth, you brought out a really good point on what we're advocating for and we are strategic and we have staff in the same position of the things that we've opposed and that. And then I say this often to the legislators as they critique our group or our body. At times I say, don't, don't judge us on our journey. Judge us on what we do. Judge us on the things that we move forward out of, out of the board and that and, and not critique us on, on our dialogue and our, on our journey. That's, that's, and that's, that's how, I guess, you know, I, I say that often. And then I put it back to them as legislators says, let's see what comes out of the session. I mean, there's dialogue and there's things moving and a, a few things and some people are weighing the winning and losing by what moves from a committee or et cetera, but they know our will. They know what's important to us. We have informed them on our, our ask and our priorities on our journey and, and what's not healthy. They, they have an opportunity to choose also. And so I, I'm kind of, I'm hopeful and optimistic that, that, that our messaging isn't falling on deaf ears. And then what comes out of the session, the, some of the things that we feared do not move forward in this space, but it's all part of that process that they have similar to the process of, that, that we have. And so I, again, leadership isn't bargaining any of, using those as a, as leverage points at all, but they have absolutely heard us. So I, I'm not, I'm not sure what those outcomes will be, but by how many listening ears and that, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit optimistic. A member straight and then Vice Chair Davis?
Well, I'm gonna change my hat a little bit to the realistic optimist. And look at what is, what is possible here. And I trust the leadership and they, they've heard us. I believe the legislature came to listen. So I, I think, I think we move forward. I think we have some we have, we have some trust built into the board that will listen. They do want our support of whatever comes out. So let's, let's make it the best for education we can and I'll trust leadership to do that.
Well, this, this is gonna come, whatever's coming out, you, you guys will be informed and it'll be before us in our, our meeting by Thursday. But we, this, this is them pushing that and we, we happen to be able to, be able to make comments and along the journey. So thank you. Vice Chair Davis?
Yes, thank you. What, what does the timeline look like? You seem to be indicating that they are willing to listen to some feedback or potentially some, some ideas that could be included in proposals. Is, is that a correct assumption? And if so, what is the timeline like for them to consider feedback?
So they've, when they're listening to feedback, they've heard feedback Friday from the JLC, which is an association. This group, of course, we're a public body in a public meeting and they're hearing questions and concerns from this. They're also most likely, I, I can't speak for them, but I would not be surprised and maybe a staff, maybe Deputy Superintendent Stallings can speak to this, that they'll start a bill file and, and things are gonna get put in in well, the deep, it'll all be in the details rolling out, but I am not at the table of writing anything. Our board isn't, we're in a position to react. So our next opportunity is gonna be Thursday. The way that I, I see it as a group, but this is, I, I think this is moving forward with or, with or without us. But they have been a little bit on the width and, and checking temperature of an appetite and listening to us in, in our limited space in what our concerns are, especially our concerns on legislative ask and what we have opposed. And so I, I, I can't, our, our next opportunity us as a board will be, will be Thursday. I don't know if that answers your question, Vice Chair Davis?
May I clarify? I'm hearing, am I hearing you say that our opportunity will be to react to the two proposals on the table? Not to provide additional requests for them to consider putting into proposals as it comes out.
I, I think, I, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of room and opportunity until Thursday. And then whether they, but there's no assurance that they will listen or modify. Vice Chair Bellknap? I'm getting a little digital, so I'm gonna turn my
We have to go, Chair. We have one minute, but did you want Angie to respond to your question or?
Well, does she, does she want to weigh in on what's happening next? And did you have a follow-up, Vice Chair?
Nope, it's, it's almost eleven thirty, so no, Chair.
So Angie, are you still with us? If she can't they're questioned on next steps or what they may or may not be doing and when?
Yes. So I think, and this is Angie Stallings, Deputy Superintendent Policy USBE, that as Chair Hanson stated, they're likely going to make some motions to open some bill files or start drafting things with bill files they already have existing. I don't, I doubt that they would have bill files public by Thursday. But I do, I guess I would say two things. One, I think Vice Chair Davis, you asked what kind of feedback are they open to from the board? I think they're, they're open to feedback on, you know, the two different proposals for the constitutional amendment language as well as maybe some feedback on whether the four things that they included in the document that I sent you earlier today and that they were showing. Whether those four things are the right things or if there's something different. As an example, what, I know there's been questions about whether more of an, a current increase on the WPU in exchange for paid educator professional time or something else. So I think that they will be listening to everything, but I do not believe there will be bill files ready by Thursday there. That's my guess is that they might be ready by Friday or next week.
And so these, these two options that's before us, or if there's anything else that they might want to put before us for consideration, most likely will be part of our discussion on our, our Thursday meeting. So can I be heard?
Yes, that was helpful. Thank you, Chair.
I'm, my face is froze, so I'll
No, we can, we can hear you and see you, Chair.
Okay, it's eleven thirty-one and we're, we'll end, end this. I want to thank you guys again for taking the phone call, for being here. It just speaks to this group that we can get all of our board members together in a short period of time. And any developments as this is moving forward, if we have anything out there, we'll just keep putting in, putting into the queue to prepare us for our Thursday meeting. So thank you and appreciate your work and your service and take care and be safe and all that other good stuff. Thank you. Meetings adjourned.
Thank you.